Before being present, this special town meeting will come to order. The warrant for this special town meeting was signed by the Board of Selectmen on October 25th, 2004. It was published in the October 28th edition of the Middleborough Gazette and was posted by Constable Thomas Robinson on November 1st, 2004. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the General Bylaws of the Town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. For this meeting, the clerk has appointed as tellers the following individuals. Marilyn Hunt. I'm falling apart, but it's okay. Marilyn Hunt on the left. Paul Malady will do the right side. Thank you. Bob Marshall from where he's sitting back. And Brian Reynolds from the row in front of Bob Marshall to the front and the stage. They have been sworn into office by the clerk. This meeting will be operated in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, the Town's General Bylaws, and by precedent of prior town meetings. While the Town Bylaws address some of the parliamentary procedures, prior town meetings have relied upon the volume, town meeting time, as the standard for conduct of this meeting, and is my intention to continue this precedent. You will note that two microphones have been positioned in each of the two aisles. I ask that if you seek recognition from the moderator, you go to one of the two microphones. When recognized by the moderator, please state your name. If you have a motion, if you want to indicate your address, please feel free to do so. If you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing. And after stating your motion, please present it to me, so that the town clerk will have it as part of the official record of this meeting. Unlike many towns, we have no standard relative to the length of time someone may speak. Generally, this has not been an issue, however. I will exercise my prerogatives to keep the meeting moving if I find a speaker repeats the same points that he or she has raised. As has been task practice, I will allow the maker of the motion an opportunity to speak on the motion before recognizing anyone else. After the maker of a motion has had an opportunity to speak, I will seek the recommendation of the Finance Committee. In the case of zoning articles, I will seek the report of the Planning Board. Then, any other registered voter may speak on the article or ask questions. When it comes to voting, I ask that you hold up your red-colored voting card. You must have this in your hand when your hand is up, if you wish your hand to be counted. During the voting, if I can easily determine the quantum of vote, you can quickly lower your arms. However, if there is a counted vote, I will ask that you'll keep holding your voting card elevated, so that the tellers can see it, and count the votes in your section. The use of a voting card will assure that only the votes of registered eligible voters are counted. You also should have in your possession a yes/no vote, should we need to go to a silent ballot. A reminder, I did it before meeting began, because I saw that there were some problems. No food or drink, except clear water, is allowed in the auditorium. Before we begin our special town meeting, I would like to do two things. First, I would like to call to your attention the residents of Lakeville who were active in town government and who have passed away since our last town meeting. Then, after I have read the list, I would ask that you stand and honor our country by pledging to the flag. Please remain standing afterward for a moment of silence in memory of the name I read. The town resident who has passed away since last town meeting is Harry W. Hamilton, who passed away October 3rd, 2004. He served on the Town Forest Commission from May of 1958 to April of 1962. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment. Finally, I would like to introduce those of us on the stage. To my left is Sandra Horton, our town clerk. And then, in order, Rita Garbit, Town Administrator, Mark Rich, our town council, the three selectmen, Shawna Hurd, Richard LaCamera, Jerry White, members of the Finance Committee, Martha Weeks Green, Richard Velez, Gary Mansfield, and Cindy McCray. Oh, and Stephen is here. I'm sorry, Stephen, I missed you. Stephen is here. And Cindy McCray, is she on air? Yes, she is. Yes, she is. Our town accountant. Before we begin, everyone should have in their possession a copy of the town warrant. If you do not have a copy of the town warrant, please raise your hand, and a teller will see to it that you do, because in some cases, there are a lot of meats and bams that we're not going to read. While Mr. Marshall is getting a couple of copies. All set, Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you pass that over, please?
Now that all have a copy of the warrant, I would seek a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Motion has been made and seconded to waive the reading of the warrant. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, may raise their cards. I see no opposition. Article 1.
Moderator.
Mr. LaCamera.
I ask that the information is provided that you refer to page number 5, please.
Everyone find page number 5.
Mr. Moderator, I vote that the town vote to transfer appropriate from available funds certain sums of money in order to deprey unanticipated costs for fiscal year 2005 for various accounts in the general fund, the Park Enterprise and Landfield Enterprise. Transfer from reserve for appropriation, special revenue from land sales, $25,345. To raise and appropriate, $69,602. And to transfer from park retained earnings, $18,300. And going to the right side, to transfer to townwide network equipment of $10,000, telecommunications consultant, $5,000. Insurance auto police cruiser, $12,000. Bi-weekly payroll transition for elected, appointed, and salaried officials, $15,252. Heating fuel, $7,500. General government gasoline, $9,000. Treasurer collector wages, three clerks, $15,195. Building inspector wages, $1,000, $5,000. Water selectmen wages, part-time clerk, $6,000. Part-time conservation agent, $10,000. Repair and maintenance of buildings and grounds, $18,300.
Do I have a second? Do you wish to speak to it before I go to the Finance Committee?
Sure. I just want to explain a couple of the items within this article. The first thing is, is that at the annual town meeting, there was not enough funding to provide the debt service payment for the Ted Williams camp. And the reason why is because we used the sale from the town-owned Lakeville Development Corporation to use that payment to pay off the Ted Williams camp. That money was not available at the annual town meeting, and is now available, so that's what the $25,345 is. We were also fortunate to receive $90,000 in additional state aid this past summer for additional spending. And briefly, what the additional spending is for is the town network equipment of $10,000. The town has its own fiber-optic cable that is connected to all the town office buildings, and this is to finish tying in the Ted Williams camp, the Ascent School, and the senior center. Not only does this provide us interdepartmental communication, but it will also provide us with security systems that will be tied in to the police department. The next item is the communications, to hire a telecommunications consultant. Currently, the phone system in the town office building lease is about to expire, and we'd like to buy our own phone system that would service all of the town office buildings, who would naturally save money by doing that. The next item is, unfortunately, we had an accident with one of the police officers. It was not that person's fault. The insurance company is paying for, I believe it's $14,000, and we have to pay $12,000. So instead of repairing the cruiser, we're going to be buying a new cruiser. The next item is that every five years, there's a 53rd week that's required for the salaried employees only, and so this is the year that it is required, and that's $15,252. That is not an increase in any town employee's salary or wages. Being conservative, we're adding $7,500 to the heating fuel. We all know that the heating costs have gone up. The same thing applies as far as gasoline is concerned. And the treasurer's and collector's office, we went into the annual town meeting hoping to be able to bring the three clerks in the treasurer and collector's office from 32 and a half hours up to 40 hours, and we weren't able to do that. Now we're asking town meeting to approve that. The same thing applies for the building department, going from 32 hours to 40 hours. And in these cases, we do not have to hire new employees, and that means we don't have to pay health insurance costs, so it actually benefits the town in the long run. We're also, we went into the annual town meeting looking for a part-time clerk for the selectmen's office, and that was $6,000, and that person would be hired as of January 1st. A part-time conservation agent, in working with the planning board and the Conservation Commission, the planning board has instituted site fees for developments, and what we're doing is taking that money and hiring a part-time conservation agent. Thank you.
Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee approves.
Thank you. Before we take any questions from the floor or vote, I would just like to remind everyone that you have to be seated. You cannot stand in the back. You cannot be over by the control center. You have to be seated for your ballot to count. And I instruct the tellers to not count anyone's ballot of anyone standing up in the back. Are there any questions about Article 1? Seeing no questions, we'll move to a vote if there's a simple majority. All in favor of Article 1, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to Article 1, please raise your cards. Thank you, passes by majority vote. Article 2.
Mr. Moderator.
Herr.
I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds, $35,000, to fund the services of a consultant to conduct feasibility study and/or hire an architect to design schematic drawings for the purpose of considering future town organizational facilities for a public safety town office building, or police station, or fire station, or any combination thereof, the location of which will be recommended by town meeting after completion of the study.
Do I hear a second? Would you wish to speak to it, Mr. Hurd?
Yes, just, this is coming out of the work of the Public Safety Feasibility Study Committee. They met for over a year, looking at various options on how we would best configure public safety and town office needs, with the idea of trying to create a plan to have in place to apply for grant money when public safety money again becomes available in the future. It isn't right now. As I said, they had a bunch of meetings over the course of the year looking at this, and they feel that they've gotten to the point where they need the services of a consultant in order to come up with which one of the many options really make the most sense for the town, to start to looking at what the funding options would be, and to start to look at citing options as well. A clarification that came up when we met with the Finance Committee, schematic drawings are not artistic renderings, they are simply the simple picture sketches that you need as part of submitting the funding application.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee approves.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the article? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This is a simple majority. All in favor of Article 2, please raise your red cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to Article 2, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Passes by majority vote.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I move that the town vote to accept under provisions of General Laws, Chapter 9, Section 34, 2A, enforcement of Chapter 246B, Acts of 2002, in amount of $186,593.
Do I hear a second? Would you care to speak to it?
This is Chapter 9 money that's given to us from the state each year, and we have to vote on this to have it given to us.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approves.
I don't foresee a lot of discussion on this one. All in favor of Article 3, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to Article 3, please raise your cards. There are some people who don't want to accept the money. It's passed by majority vote. Article 4.
Moderator, I move that the town vote that the sum of $120,000 is hereby appropriated to pay costs of purchasing a street sweeper for the highway to town, and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this enforcement, the treasurer would be given this requirement, and hereby authorize to borrow said sum under the pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, 9 of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bond or note to the town therefore.
Thank you, do I hear a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Hamilton, would you care to speak to it?
At the present time, we had a 1984 sweeper, and we spent considerable amount of money to string to keep it running. Now the engine's blown, so I think it's time to replace it.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approves.
Does anyone wish to discuss it? Seeing no discussion, this is going to be a two-thirds vote, and I would like the tellers to please count. Are we ready, tellers? All in favor of Article 4, please raise your cards. Mr. Malady? If you are standing, your vote will not be counted. Please sit in one of the many seats in front.
Forty.
Forty, thank you. Mr. Marshall?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. You may put all your cards down now. All opposed, please raise your red cards. Thank you.
Two.
Two.
One.
One.
Five.
Five. Count is 205 to 8. I declare it passed by more than two-thirds. Article 5.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote that the sum of $50,000 is hereby appropriated to pay costs of making necessary repairs for a residence known as the Gallowell House, located on property owned by the town, which is described as parcel two, and a deed recorded with the Clement County Registry of Deeds in Book 7228, Page 61, in order to preserve the residence and prevent the demolition thereof, and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto. And that the selectman is hereby authorized to borrow said sum under, and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, 3A of the General Laws, pursuant to any other enable authority and judicial bonds, give notes of the town's bare house.
Do I hear a second?
The property that we're talking about, just for the people that would like to know where it's at, going into the Ted Williams camp, there's an entrance and there's an exit, and it's the house that's right in between those two roads. And when we purchased the Ted Williams camp in 1986, this was an asset for the town, and we had to draw on rent. But the house has now become very much disarrayed. It's got an old type of foundation which is made out of cement log. It's got a dirt floor, and it's all windows replaced. The roof needs to be replaced. It needs a lot of work, but we feel that we should put this in front of the town meeting people, because you've paid for the property, and you're going to have to either vote yes to spend the money for the $50,000 to refurbish it, and we don't know if the $50,000 is going to do it. I wouldn't doubt it's $25,000 just in the windows. Or, if we vote no, then we're going to tear the building down, but it's up to you people.
Before I go on to the Finance Committee's report, I also have an indication here that the Historical Commission has a report. Finance Committee, want to do it first?
Yeah, the Finance Committee does not recommend this article, and can I speak there?
Certainly.
We feel that since the premises has been vacated, that there's no longer an issue of people not having a shelter over there. So, and in addition to that, we also would like to provide by what the Fox Commission wishes are, and their wishes are unanimously to tear this building down, so we do not recommend this article.
Thank you. I understand that the Historical Commission has a report.
I would say for the Historical Commission.
Got it really? There you go.
And we have examined that building very carefully, and we find that it has lost its integrity. That means that the wrong types of windows have been used to replace them, and a door has been taken to a new, various, different, and wrong kinds of replacements have been done. So, since the law feels that it is a true source of energy that has been lost, we would not object to the demolition.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question about this article? Seeing none, we move to a vote. This is going to require two-thirds. I think we better count. Ready? All in favor of $50,000 to fix this house, please raise your cards. That was easy.
Two.
Two.
Zero.
Zero. All opposed to this, please raise your cards.
Sixty-two.
Thank you, you may put your cards down. The vote is 229 to 2. Number is 230 to 2. I declare it passed by, failed by more than two-thirds. It failed tremendously. We move to Article 6.
Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Settlers Drive as a townway as laid out by the Board of Selectmen, and to authorize the selectmen to acquire by gift an easement or fee simple in the way, and any related easements as shown on the road layout plan drawn by Azor Land Sciences, Inc., on file with the town clerk entitled Road Layout and As-Built Plan Settlers Drive, Hitching Post Road, Trappers Path, and Wagon Trail in Lakeville, Mass., dated October 20th, 2004.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Second. Motion has been made, seconded, you wish to speak to it.
The next, I mean, three or four articles, it has to do with roads that the town would accept that have been built in developments.
Okay. I take it Mr. Hamilton has had an opportunity to observe all four of these. Mr. Hamilton?
I've inspected all four roads for construction, and they all been counted, so it's a basis for the next grant.
We may go through four articles rather quickly. Does anyone wish to speak to Article 6? I assume the Finance Committee doesn't have a recommendation one way or another. Mining Board have a recommendation?
Mining Board approves this article.
And all the other three?
And the other three.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else have something they would like to add to this Article 6? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This is a majority vote. All in favor of this article, please raise your red cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to this article, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. This passes by majority vote. Article 7.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Hitching Post Road as a townway as laid out by the Board of Selectmen, and to authorize the selectmen to acquire by gift an easement or fee simple in the way, and any related easements as shown on the road layout plan drawn by Azor Land Sciences Incorporated, on file with the town clerk entitled Road Layout and As-Built Plan Settlers Drive, Hitching Post Road, Trappers Path, and Wagon Trail in Lakeville, Mass., dated October 20th, 2004.
That has been made and seconded. Mr. Hamilton has recommended it, appeals have recommended it. I think we're all set to vote. If there is no one here, we should suspend. I see no one. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. I declare this passed by majority vote. Article 8.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to accept Trappers Path as a townway as laid out by the Board of Selectmen, and to authorize the selectmen to acquire by gift an easement or fee simple in the way, and any related easements as shown on the road layout plan drawn by Azor Land Sciences, Inc., on file with the town clerk entitled Road Layout and As-Built Plan Settlers Drive, Hitching Post Road, Trappers Path, and Wagon Trail in Lakeville, Mass., dated October 20th, 2004.
Seconded. Motion has been made and seconded. You've heard it all before. Anyone have anything to discuss about it? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. I declare it has passed by majority vote. Article 9.
Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Wagon Trail as a townway as laid out by the Board of Selectmen, and to authorize the selectmen to acquire by gift an easement or fee simple in the way, and any related easements as shown on the road- and any related easements as shown on the road layout plan drawn by Azor Land Sciences, on file with the town clerk entitled Road Layout and As-Built Settlers Drive, Hitching Post Road, Trappers Path, and Wagon Trail in Lakeville, Mass., dated October twentieth, two thousand and four.
Motion has been made and seconded. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This also is a majority. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. I declare it passed by a majority vote. Article ten.
Moderator, uh, my name is John Ryder. I'm a resident of the town. Article ten. I move that the town vote will amend the official zoning now by rezoning a portion of fifteen forty-seven eighty-four acres to pay the assessments, Act twenty-two, Law two, Act nineteen slash twenty, on our Island Street, Route forty-four, currently owned by June and Ken Genosse, the residential and business. The legal section is to handle the building they're on.
Okay, may I stop you? Uh, at this point, uh, it is a meets and bounds reading. Is there anything in the meets and bounds that you are going to read that is different from the warrants?
Only one exception in baran. It's spelled B-A-R-E-A-N, rather than B-A-R-D-N as corrected on the law.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone who objects to his not reading all of the meets and bounds? Okay. Then we will accept the motion as read. This is Article ten, right? Okay. Is and, I need a second. Motion has been made and seconded. Do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, I do. Uh, this particular parcel of land is located right on Route forty-four where time and length of the joint, going from the county to the municipal county in the areas predominantly commercial. The money on this particular parcel is already resolved business. The posses, I say this under the agreement, present over is the real to resolve the business use and is managed by the entire parcel of the sort of business that is represented by the posses.
Is there a drawing somewhere that people... Okay. Right, I'm, I know it is. I want everyone to know that, okay? There is a picture of it on one of the pages. May I see? If you wish to see exactly the description that the gentleman is giving us. Does the Planning Board have a recommendation?
Moderator, the Planning Board held a hearing on the fifteenth of November and we unanimously approved, uh, accepting the article.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. Does anyone wish to speak to the article? Would you please go over to the microphone, identify yourself?
I'm Richard Turner from Southern Bond Street in Lakeland. I just wanted to let people know that I'm kind of an agent of the reasoning behind this policy. I have known that property for many, many years. I was very friendly with George and Ethel Penniman. And I have maintained woodup next in boxes, both on the Cranberry Bar, right directly behind the house, the houses, and on a little tiny ground pool that's very close to Muckins. That's not the only, only ground pool on this property. Ground pools, I think most of you understand, are places where salmon and frogs come and lay their eggs in the spring of the year. You get all the spring peacocks and wood frogs and so forth commonplace. And, and the majority of this property is either wetland or almost right against it. There, there is some, there are some ridges, some very rugged escars, hard baches, you may call them. And one of them wraps almost halfway around that Cranberry Bar. The addition, in addition to that, the Cranberry Bar was probably created by, by the Richmond family before George Penniman was involved, but I do not know of it. However, there is a cut through that escar to allow the water to drain. In other words, you can't have a Cranberry Bar, as you all know, going underwater. So, we had to have the control of that bar. It has, that runs on a, towards Tyre Shack, if you will. And so, that makes it, it impossible for the management to, to develop a frontage along forty-four. And if you travel along forty-four, there is, there is another ground pool kinda like beside the house, the Penniman's house, which is going again toward the Tyre Shack and heading toward the Constance Plaza. At any rate, that's very close to, that's very, that comes very close to the road within like a hundred and twenty feet of Route forty-four. And going toward Muckins, there is this other ground pool which is, which is, uh, very highly used by both spotted turtles and wood frogs. And I show some palamens, though I have not actually seen one. But in any rate, then, but once you get behind that, you're going right into swamp. It's on the, on the, uh, do you view it on the, uh, the Paton's Agriculture Soil Map? It shows it dissolves as much. In other words, it's swamp. And it's cedar groves in there. And of course, obviously, I think most of you know, white lines, blue groves, infested, um, on the high points of some of that ground. So, there are white lines and there are certainly red maple in there. But, uh, it just, it just appears to me that the only gain for anybody buying this property would be to remove the gravel, which, which would be in those escars there. And it's, it's really a piece of the property like any one of you would love to walk. It's just a very, very unusual thing. And I can't see any evidence. I don't know, I have not received an answer from anyone that I've asked. Is what is the depth of business zoning along that strip?
Mr. Merrick, can you answer that question?
As best as my knowledge, Mr. Moderator, the depth of the zoning is four hundred feet along Highland Street.
Thank you.
I truly believe that if we accept through one or two of those escars, everything beyond four hundred, beyond four hundred feet is going to be wetland. And if you go off of the Constance Plaza, it's wetter still. There is a Cranberry Bar, there was a Cranberry Bar right in front of the Tyre Shack. And that, that, of course, they could not fill all of it. And that's mixed up, I don't think. But it wraps right around that building, all along the lake side of that building. And saying going way on back, which is necessary, that, that wetland is, there's running water today there. I was there this evening. And there was plenty of running water right there, though. I, I was, I'm certainly opposed to changing your vote from just zoning along all of that property.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else wish to discuss it? Seeing none, we move to a vote.
Mr. Benesky. Yes, Mr. Benesky. Uh, question to the petitioners, I guess. If they wanna change it from residential to business, uh, it seems to be an awful lot of wooded area. Uh, is there any information of what they plan to do with it as far as putting business in that area?
Will the petitioner answer that question? Mr. Ryan?
Yes. I don't think it's part of this time that particularly useful to put in a business wedge. I do know that anything going forward is to capture the line and put a new regulation economy in place for the development of the property development.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Benesky? Mr. Leonard, do you think you could play with that second, see if you can make it? Okay.
No.
Are you going to have to speak into it or raise it up somehow? Seems to have died. Thank you.
Better?
Better.
Uh, I had the opportunity to examine, uh, a sketch. I had the opportunity to examine a sketch as a member of the Planning Board. It looked like a straightforward, uh, honest to goodness, improved, uh, recommendation. Business all around, uh, a couple of, uh, twenty-eight deposits roughly, uh, isolated, uh, in, in residential zoning. So, my, my first, uh, thought form or list of the Planning Board, and I don't speak for them, was, why not? We should recommend that. Uh, there is, uh, some other, um, positive examinations having been done, uh, on Mr. Turner and others, which indicated maybe committing assault. So, uh, I would recommend that perhaps, uh, an expert or people, uh, that are bent towards, uh, the environmental issues that Mr. Turner brings up, examine and bring this back again to spring town meeting or another town meeting for, uh, uh, greater application.
So, you're recommending a, a no vote pending further in, in, further information?
Please say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, moving to the microphone. Mr. Leonard, are you saying that you're changing your mind about your vote on the Planning Board?
I don't change my mind on the, on the planning board vote.
Thank you.
But with, uh, a greater application of the, the area which we did not get, we should look at. And there were no, uh, indications that it wasn't just like the rest of the, the, uh, business zoning around there. I made my vote on that issue. I think it would improve, uh, the town and also the, uh, the butters or prospective owners to, to have somebody else look at it.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is John Walker. Um, I just, the first speaker gave an impassioned plea for the protection of that natural area, citing the wildlife and the wetlands are very vital. Um, I just learned who he is. Could he please get up and cite his credentials? Because they're worth listening to, what he has to say. Thank you.
Mr. Turner, would you please say who you are? But don't touch the microphone.
I guess I should call myself a lifelong Lakeland resident, number one. And I just happen to work for the State Division of Fisheries and Wildlife and have since January the tenth, nineteen forty-nine. I've, uh, kind of seen a lot of, of areas, not only in this town, in, uh, in this county, but all over the eastern portion of the state and even a little bit of the, of the western portion. At any rate, uh, and I say that this is really a unique spot. And I, I just wish that I could take everyone here by the hand and walk from over the trail over the escars there, which have been surveyed out. And the surveys they say are driven in the ground, and you know right well, that they were sizing up the amount of cubic yards of material that would be available.
Thank you, sir. Before anyone else speaks, I don't know what's wrong with that microphone. At least it's working, but please don't anybody touch it.
May I say in rebuttal, first of all, uh, the person buying the property is Gene Bobler, a local resident. And I do agree with the integrity of his development where it suits for itself. Secondly, he has hired an extensive, expensive office to go all, all over the property. Whatever he does with the property, we try to build appropriate boards and he will do the right thing. Uh, he's not an outside developer. He's someone who's a resident who's concerned about the town. And I would therefore say that, uh, it would both favor this, this article and for the local reasons.
Thank you. Seeing no one further before a microphone, this is going to require two-thirds of a vote to pass. And I'm asking the tellers to please count. My light, by the way, has just folded into the desert, so. I, I can read. Uh, all in favor of, uh, Article ten, please raise your cards. Eight?
Four.
Four.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Thank you, you may put your cards down. All opposed to Article ten, please raise your cards.
Forty-nine.
Forty-one.
Twenty-one.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two. Forty-nine. I need the numbers again.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. What was your number again, Earl?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two and forty-nine. Forty-nine. Article ten fails, one hundred and seventy-one to forty-two. Thank you. Uh, Article eleven. Are you going to withdraw or to continue it? Thank you, sir. Article eleven has been withdrawn. Before I move to Article twelve, some things. All people speaking on Article twelve have to speak through me. I'm the moderator. Everyone who speaks speaks to me. Then I speak to other people. So, please keep that in the back of your mind. Second, Leval. Please understand, no personal attacks can go on at town meeting. At town meeting, you debate the issue that has been presented and you vote for it or you vote against it. I expect it to stay within the realm of decorum and good taste. If I find that that starts to change, I will let you know very quickly. Okay? So, let's continue the way we usually do and let's hope that this stays an honest discussion of the issues. Thank you. Article twelve. Yes, that one's a touchable, yes?
We, the undersigned registered voters of Lakeland, Mass., hereby petition to town to put to an open meeting, secret ballot vote the immediate imposition of a two-term limit for the elected post on the Lakeland Board of Selectmen's office as well as all Lakeland Board of Health members. Any officials now serving who have served more than two terms will be allowed to finish the term they are currently serving, but will not be allowed to run again to the same office.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. I need a copy of that, please. Before we discuss the issue, we really have two issues, okay? We have a secret ballot issue. And we have the main issue, which is whether or not we will discuss term limits. Before I even get to separating the issues, you know... Before I even get to separating the issues, uh, you know from what you have been reading in the paper, and from, uh, various pieces of information that are handed to you when you came through the door, that the main issue itself may or may not work if passed this evening. That's up to the Attorney General, not up to me. However, no one has the right to impose a secret ballot on town meeting, except the town meeting. So, I am dividing the issue into two parts, each of which has been made and seconded. One is on having a secret ballot, and the other is on term limits. Since the first on secret ballot has to do with something within the scope of what I do, that will be the, I, the, uh, the move, the motion discussed first. It will be discussed, it will be then voted upon, and then we will go to the, the other piece of the motion, which is term limits. I now entertain discussion on secret ballot. Does anyone wish to discuss it?
My name's Neil Bono, I think I feel I have to make a motion for it.
No, it's made and it's seconded, I have accepted your motion, and then cut it in half. And now we're discussing the first piece, which is the secret ballot. It has to pass, the town meeting has to decide as to whether or not it wants to have a secret ballot. Okay? And I checked that out, believe me. Six ways to Sunday. Okay? And the motion's made, it's seconded, and now I'm asking people to talk about it. Does anyone wish to discuss it? Okay, we're not going to discuss it. Then we will go to, oh, we do have a discussor.
Uh, person's white, three five, five, three, Lakeville, Mass. It was proposed that there would be a secret ballot denied on the term of term limits, on the issue of term limits. While the advocates of this proposal did not prepare properly to discuss them, I think the idea merits some comment. Someone suggested voting should be touted in secret. Somehow protect the opinions of those who have the maximum thought of that minority. And a town meeting like this one, it seems an idea that suggests intimidation and ineptly, and it asks from Board of States. It suggests more senseless publicity. Here, as in every town across America, each vote gets one vote. Each voice gets one vote. Voting by civil debate and the open forum of the town meeting are time-honored, traditionally equitable, and valid. Pardon speakers, for the voting booth, secrecy has no place here.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the secret ballot issue only? Seeing none, this is a majority vote. Tellers, I'm going to have to ask you to count on this one. I want it very, very carefully counted. All in favor of a secret ballot, please raise your red card. Five.
Four.
Twenty-four.
Five.
Thank you, you may put your cards down. All opposed to a secret ballot, please raise your cards. Mr. Maladies?
Thirty-four.
Fifty-two.
Sixty-seven.
Forty-four.
Thank you. The vote is thirty-eight in favor of a secret ballot, a hundred and ninety-seven opposed to a secret ballot. The secret ballot portion of his motion has failed. We now go to the second portion of the, of the, uh, motion, which is to discuss term limits. Please make sure that we are discussing the issues, not personalities, and please direct your questions at me. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Moderator, Charles Davis, on Lakeville. I'd like to read from something I wrote, and how I believe this should go. Please excuse my voice. I believe, sir, that term limits discriminates against those citizens who have chosen to serve, and have been elected to office by the voting population. It really says, if you have served your community for two terms, you need not apply for further service. Whether your service has been exemplary or otherwise, it will cease to be judged by election. I believe, sir, we have a system in place that automatically places term limits on all elected officials. One is elected for a specific number of years. Two, in order to serve subsequent terms, one must secure a designated number of signatures of registered voters on a nomination paper, and have these signatures certified on Board of Registers before having one's name appear on the ballot. Once placed on the ballot, a candidate for reelection must now compete with an opponent in order to retain his or her seat on the Board of Choice. Every elected official must pass a periodic evaluation by the voting public to earn the right to a subsequent term. If one doesn't measure up, chances are voters will terminate service at the ballot. If one is performing to the satisfaction of the townspeople, then that person deserves consideration for further service. Further, if the incumbent by his, her tenure developed understanding, expertise, and skill in dealing with the issues confronting the town, and is employing sound, unbiased decision-making on the townspeople, the benefits. Thank you.
Do you wish to speak?
Yes, I do. Terry, between North Creek and Street. I think term limits would take away my rights to vote for candidates officially that I think to do the job, and I think that we're lucky to live in a town in Lakeville that has good people, who give us good schools, who know what they're doing, um, most of them volunteers, and if you take them where you think they're people who don't know what they're doing up there, we could end up like many other towns around us, with schools falling apart, and towns falling apart, and I'm really against this argument.
Thank you. Would you please identify yourself? You?
Uh, Sharon Wolf, and I agree with everything that's received and said. And if you start to vote lightly, how, how it operates, then we have to get involved in the type of meeting, and find out everything that's going on, not just the resources that are only serving.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, we move to a vote. This is a majority vote. Tellers, I need you to count. All in favor of term limits, please raise your red card. Eleven. Mr. Hunt?
Six.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Thank you, you may put your cards down. Now, all people opposed to term limits, please raise your cards. Mr. Maladies?
Thirty-six.
Mr. Marshall?
Forty-eight.
Hunt?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Thank, thank you, you may put your cards down. Please wait while we tally. The vote is forty-seven in favor of term limits, a hundred and eighty-nine opposed of term limits. This article fails. Mr. Huron, no further issues on the ballot, I will entertain a motion to dissolve.
Don't move.
Motion has been made, do I hear a second? All in favor, raise your cards. Thank you, thank you for a good evening.